Was tonight? Oh, I cooked, I just cooked dinner.
I don't know, red throat, no.
Yeah, I just cooked dinner for myself. Dave and the boys decided they were giving out, so. For all of like fifteen minutes.
I was surprised we'd even allow it. Yeah, me.
And they go, and I'm not involved, the boys just want to.
You know. I need how much money is involved.
Oh, did you see what Colorado did?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the July tenth, two thousand nineteen meeting of the City of Brentwood Planning and Zoning Commission. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Chair Builderrack.
Here.
Michael Daming.
Here.
Mark Favazza.
Here.
Paul Moran.
Here.
Hart Nelson.
Here.
John Nummer is here. John Ritter.
Here.
Lisa Charling.
Here.
We have inquiry, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Nummerberger. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at the June twelfth, two thousand nineteen meeting minutes? Any objection? Yep, Ms. Builderrack.
Mr. Chairman, my name has one R in it.
Any objection to amending the minutes to reflect Ms. Builderrack's correct spelling? And any objection to approving the minutes as amended? I think none will be approved by acclamation. We have one item under Old Business this evening, it's case nineteen fifteen, application for a comprehensive sign plan and elevation review for Aspen Dental. Is the applicant here? Please step forward, sir, and introduce yourself, and just let us know how your application has changed since our last regular meeting.
Okay, Josh Mukelvany with Anchor Sign Charleston, South Carolina. So, thank you for taking some time this evening to hear this. I first like to start by apologizing to the board. We did not anticipate some of the complications with this application. I know there was a local partner that attended previous meetings, so I have traveled here today from South Carolina on behalf of Aspen Dental as their national vendor to continue this process. In preparation for the meeting, the way I interpret all the information that we have available to us, this property, there's a master sign plan that was originally written back in two thousand four that did not include this particular building. Aspen Dental signed a lease with the development in two thousand nineteen, which included their standard signage, which would include signs on all four elevations. Obviously, had some conversations with different parties, we're now down to, I think, three originally, which is what we had on the application. But now, my understanding is that we're being limited to one on the east elevation facing Hanley Street. Based on the master sign plan, which according to the code would supersede any code requirements, there's nothing in there specifically limiting them to one sign. The code itself, based on the interpretation that we have of it, would still allow for two signs, one east facing Hanley, because it's a commercial street, and then the second on the west elevation, because it's a side street that is contiguous or touching or sharing a common border with the property with the driveway and street that runs between the parking garage and this building. Aspen Dental is in no way trying to be argumentative or combative. We are, you know, we want to be good citizens, good members of the community, so we would ask that the board would consider allowing them a second sign. I know the staff recommendation did limit it to sixty square feet. If we could split that sixty square feet between the two elevations, do a smaller one on the east and a smaller one on the interior west elevation, because when customers are coming in off of, oh, sorry, the name of the street escapes me, I had written it down, but when they come to the back way in front of the Jimmy Johns, when you, when you see the back of that building, that east or west elevation, excuse me, there's no signage to identify what that is. It's a very tight space, there's very limited parking, so there's a need for that sign, I mean, just generally to have it over the front door, because the east elevation, there's no access for customers. It's on that west elevation interior facing, so I'm here again to ask the board to consider these unique circumstances and, and get clarification if the board's position is, we are going to be limited to one sign on the east, to ask what is determining that, because again, the master sign plan doesn't dictate it, nor does the municipal code.
Okay, thank you, sir. What was your last name?
Mukelvany. Let me spell that.
Please.
M-U-C-K-E-L-V as in Victor. A-N-E-Y.
Very good, sir. And I appreciate your attendance here this evening. Ms. Kirkemyer, staff report.
I don't know that any of the information has changed since we were discussing it at the June meeting. I guess I should probably address though the comment made by the applicant this evening. So, it appears that they interpret the code that they should be allowed to have two signs, wall signs, and the code reads that you can only have signs on commercial street frontages, and so you have to go to the definition of commercial street frontage. It's clear that Hanley Road would be considered a commercial street frontage, and it names some other streets, but then also it does talk about any street in a commercially developed, developed area deemed a commercial street by the Board of Alderman. The interior traffic circulation, internal traffic circulation of Hanley Station, and in particular where the Aspen Dental Office Building is going up, that doesn't include a commercial or a public right-of-way through there. So, again, this is how I've interpreted since the time I've been here, and I would say that definitely I'm interpreting it the way my predecessors have also looked at it before from their review of sign permits and so forth. So, what the staff report said back in June would still remain is that the project would be able to have one wall sign, and that would be along Hanley Road, and that's based upon the size of it, the sign area is based upon what the linear commercial street frontage is along that side. So, the report had said that based, they are limited with commercial street frontage in that size, it's only ninety feet, so the maximum sign area is twenty-two and a half square feet. Now, I personally think that is probably pretty small, along a major thoroughfare that's got several lanes. So, that's why, again, staff could, I think, concede, working with them through the comprehensive sign plan provision, to allow a larger sign on that east elevation. I think what they had proposed is around fifty-five square feet. Whatever they have area to work with on the building, you know, I could say maybe going up to about sixty square feet would be comparable to other signage that was allowed on Hanley Road. So, that's where that came from. I can still answer any other questions, or if there's something else that you'd like for me to address that the applicant has noted tonight, I can do that, so.
Well, the commission will recall, we took this up at the June regular meeting, and we had a subcommittee, Ms. Shering, if you'd like to chime in with, with any insight, but the subcommittee took this up, and certainly appreciate their efforts, and their recommendation was to only allow the one wall sign on the east elevation and to limit that sign to sixty square feet.
That's correct. That's correct, that was the discussion.
So, certainly, we're, we yield to our subcommittee nearly always, and I think you're just running into a, a code compliance issue in terms of desiring a sign on the west elevation. Strikes me that the, let's see, the north elevation would be along Strassner, so that would be permitted.
Well, I think I was asked at the last, or at least the regular meeting, about Buffalo Wild Wings. So, Buffalo, Buffalo Wild Wings is the establishment that's got the corner location, so they had the advantage of the Strassner Road and the Hanley Road. They're the building that sits at the corner. This is just south of the Buffalo Wild Wings.
So, just to be clear, the staff has made the determination that our code only permits one wall sign on the east elevation?
Correct.
Okay.
May I ask a question? My understanding is that this property has a master sign plan. That supersedes the code restriction. As a part of that development, again, this was written in two thousand four, they signed the lease in two thousand nineteen, do they have the option to go back to the landowner and have that process started to redevelop that master sign plan? Because everyone else in that development, again, based on the sign plan superseding code, has more than one sign, and given that this is a new building, I, I think there should be some consideration for that, and would ask the board to consider that to be a unique circumstance.
Okay, Ms. Kirkemyer, is there a sign plan in effect for this property?
So, there is for Hanley Station, but from months of conversation with, with the sign company here, we have said that the ordinance dictating Hanley Station, and specifically the signage, does not include signage provisions under the comprehensive sign plan for these outlots. So, so in other words, there is, there's a comprehensive sign plan that governs Hanley Station, but this undeveloped lot was not part of that comprehensive sign plan, and that was even brought up in two thousand eighteen, when the site plan came through with Aspen Dental, and we pointed it out then, that the comprehensive sign plan for Hanley Station does not include this lot, and we even like to encourage, I know you all like to kind of see the whole package together, so that is what we had encouraged, you know, last fall or summer when that came through. But, you know, understandably so, you know, they have corporate sign packages that they like, they didn't know what they were going to develop at the time, so it never came in as, you know, as part of the overall package with the site plan that you reviewed, so. We had said, if you, if you want to use the comprehensive sign plan provision, then it'll have to come back. If you want to exceed our regular, our general signage regulations, then you would have to come back for a comprehensive sign plan. So, that's kind of where we're at with things.
So, this property is not subject to the comprehensive sign plan from two thousand four?
Not the one that's on record.
Okay, and just to be clear, does this commission have any discretion, even in the context of a new comprehensive sign plan, to deviate from the code?
So, either we could have went back to amend the comprehensive sign plan for all of the development, or they have the right to come in with their own comprehensive sign plan for a lot. You can be a single lot development and come in under that comprehensive sign plan provision. You don't have to be a, a development center or anything like that, so.
But they haven't asked to amend the overall comprehensive sign plan, correct?
Correct. They, they're.
Are, are they presenting a comprehensive sign plan for a single lot here?
Yes, so the package, we have not received any new elevations, that was the other thing that, and I've been talking to a different representative from your company, but as soon as we had the June meeting, and trying to, trying to anticipate getting ready for the June twenty-six site plan meeting, I said, you know, now would be the time, if you have, you know, other options that, that you could maybe consider, get those new elevations, you know, to us or what have you. So, the elevations in your staff report for July meeting is exactly what you had at the June meeting, those have not changed, and that was, so that was submitted back in June.
But the commission does have the discretion, in light of its being presented as a new comprehensive sign plan for the one property, we do have the discretion to award more than one sign?
Yes, yes.
All right, questions?
Yeah, to her point about there not being any additional renderings, the, the only difference is that, based on going back to Aspen Dental, obviously, they wanted four, they applied for three, again, them trying to operate in good faith, we've completely removed that sign from the, the north elevation, and we're just asking for the east and the west.
Understood. Questions from commissioners? Ms. Builderrack.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just an aside on the, the old comp plan for the, or sign plan for the big site, that's something totally normal that we would do when we had different lots and parcels that weren't part of the bigger thing that were going to come later, that we would not have signage approved as part of that, so that's just totally normal, par for the course, for what we've done on a bunch of big developments in, in the city, to be consistent. And on, as a comprehensive sign plan, which is something that's newer since we did this development, so it's something I think that we're all still kind of working our way through, and I, I could see personally, and, and I wasn't at site plan, and, and my apologies, I had conflicts on both the nights that we talked about, where I knew I wasn't going to be able to make it. I, I could see where it would make sense if, if you had your, you said your entrance is on the, the west side? Yes, ma'am. Okay, and I have a little trouble trying to see these, because the print's so small with my eyes, but maybe I need to get reading glasses. That's not you, I mean, you didn't, yeah. But, I, I mean, I could see the, the rationale for, like, I, I think it makes just good common sense for a flow of even pedestrians to have some sort of signage where your entrance is. Obviously, you've got to have signage on Hanley Road, you know, maybe the signage over the entrance is smaller than, like, the one on the other side, on the, the big thoroughfare, but just to kind of throw that out as some food for thought. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Shering, what do you think the subcommittee would have thought about limiting them to the sixty square feet, but allowing them a sign on the east elevation and on the west elevation?
Um, that, we didn't even get into any discussion about that, because there was no mention of the strong desire to have a second sign. There was no new materials presented at subcommittee. There was a representative there who, I think, was trying to get clarification on where we stood in the process and what the next steps would be, but there was no proposed alternative signage discussed. So, Mr. Shipley and I just simply reviewed what we had talked about in the last regular meeting in terms of what the code would allow.
Yeah, no, I think that's, I think that was wise. Sir, how, how do we address this, to the extent the commission would consider allowing, given that we do have the discretion to allow a additional signage, to the extent we would consider your request to allow an east elevation and a west elevation sign, but limit you to sixty square foot, how do we know what that would look like?
To, I apologize for there not being new renderings put together, but in preparation for tonight, I had my designers put together drawings, and it basically shows two smaller signs, instead of twenty-four inch letters on the front, that way I could see exactly what it was going to be, and when I say the front, that's the west in, in our vocabulary, and then on the east, it would be thirty-two inches instead of the thirty-eight inches that we're proposing for the overall height.
Collectively, under sixty square feet?
Yeah, actually, it comes out to sixty point zero one. I, I can.
Answer is no.
I, I, I can shave that down. If, if I need to build, if I need to build it, twenty-three and three quarters instead of twenty-four, I can do that.
In the same area where the, I'm looking at the east elevation and the west elevation, in the same area as presented in the current elevations that we have?
See, what, like, right here?
Correct.
It's going to be facing that little driveway, I mean, nobody's going to see it.
Mr. Nummerberger?
I have, there's another issue that has to be addressed when we talk about this, is the metal awning issue as well. So, I'm just thinking of if we're going to give, because we're in a band development area, so we have a lot of latitude. We went through this, I was on the commission when we went through the whole plan. So, we do have some latitude to be able to do things, but I'm thinking maybe we can talk about the awnings as well. If we give them the sign on the west elevation, then maybe they can do the cloth awnings instead of the metal awnings.
Yeah, are you familiar with that recommendation?
Yes, I, I did see that in the staff report. Again, everything we have shown is the standard application for, for Aspen Dental. I know that their desire for the sign on the west elevation would be such that we would do cloth awnings. They would be blue, but they would be cloth.
I believe at the subcommittee that they agreed to cloth as well.
Oh, okay.
Or that they thought they were amenable to that.
Very good, thank you. Other questions from commissioners? Well, commissioners, what are your thoughts with allowing the applicant to have a elevation on the west side in addition to the east side, limiting the applicant to sixty point zero one square foot, but also requiring the applicant to change the metal awnings to fabric awnings? Ms. Builderrack?
I think with the added information that we have that the subcommittee didn't have, I think it would be prudent, I also think it would be a service to the community to do it, I think it'll help traffic pedestrians.
Anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this application? Ms. Kirkemyer, any staff objection to that approach?
Yeah, sounds good.
Any other comments, discussion? Okay. Chair, entertain a vote? Motion?
Motion. A motion to approve a comprehensive sign plan for this property with signage on the east and west, no more than sixty point zero one square feet, and canvas awning, canvas or cloth awnings?
Fabric?
Unchangeable. I mean, canvas cloth is. Fabric, whatever, fabric awnings.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Ms. Builderrack. Is that satisfactory to you, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Chair Builderrack?
Yes.
Mark Favazza?
Yes.
Paul Moran?
Yes.
Hart Nelson?
Yes.
John Nummer is yes. John Ritter?
Yes.
Lisa Charling?
Yes.
Motion passes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, sir, thanks for coming up here to St. Louis.
Appreciate it.
We have one item under New Business, is a application for a text amendment to regulate medical marijuana facilities in the city of Brentwood. Is there, Ms. Kirkemyer, would you like to present on this?
Sure. So, I know we, we've talked about it, at least had mentioned that the state of Missouri and the voters last fall had approved legalizing medical marijuana here in the state of Missouri. So, what came out of that legislation that was approved by voters was that communities cannot now, or counties, communities, counties cannot prohibit facilities that cater to medical marijuana. There's different types of facilities. There's dispensaries, which is probably the one that's more common, that would be the storefront that actually people go in, that have their medical card, could go in and purchase the marijuana, and then there's other facilities, such as the cultivation facilities where it's grown. There are facilities that they take the crop, and then they infuse it with other things to make other products, and then the fourth facility would be a testing facility. Now, those testing facilities, I think they're planning on two in the state of Missouri. I don't think that we're going to have, would ever have an application maybe for a testing facility in here, just because we're landlocked and, and we're basically developed. I don't know so much about the cultivation or the infused products facility, that, that potentially could happen, an application for that, but more than likely, we would have applications for dispensaries. So, I worked with Stephanie Carr, our land use attorney, to draft an ordinance that would come up with land use regulations then to allow these types of facilities in Brentwood. The way we would do it, the way other communities are doing it, is by addressing it through their zoning chapter, so that's what's proposed in this ordinance, that we would amend Chapter four hundred, our zoning code for the city of Brentwood. And then also, if we wanted to go ahead and add any supplemental regulations, the zoning requirements, of course, would, would spell out what zoning districts they could locate in, if it would be permitted by right, or if it would be permitted by conditional use. And then also, I think it would be wise to have some, the ordinance also deal with some additional or supplemental regulations, because when the bill was passed, the legislation was passed by the state, they did allow the communities to still have policing powers over some elements of facilities, and mostly, that's just distance requirements. You can legally implement any type of distance requirements from public facilities, such as schools, churches, daycare centers, and then also, the state law, the way it was written, allows you to also place a distance requirement between medical marijuana facilities. So, the number, the total number of permits that the state of Missouri is going to allow is based on just the Missouri population, it's based on per capita. The other thing that they're trying to do with the Missouri law is to make these facilities really be located, dispersed reasonably throughout the state. It might be more profitable for everybody to locate in urban areas, but to some degree, then it defeats the purpose of allowing medical marijuana to be able to, to be in rural areas as well, where other patients would need it. So, that being said, the state of Missouri is kind of divided up in districts, I believe it might be twenty-four, so that's another thing, when they start reviewing these applications, they're, they're going to be looking at is how we can disperse these throughout the state, and then whatever the per capita is right now for the state of Missouri, that will determine the actual cap for each one of these four types of facilities. So, what we have for you tonight is, to get us started, I guess I should just stay upfront, the way the Missouri legislation was passed, it's been given to the state of Missouri Senior and Health Services Agency or Department to administer medical marijuana, and so, that being said, they're, they're still kind of wrestling with having everything set up to even start being able to accept applications, not only for the license for these facilities, but again, the, the patients, the patients that would be able to get the medical marijuana. So, there's still obviously, I think, almost questions from the state end of it, and as well, they don't have everything quite set up, but they are starting to accept license applications for facilities beginning August third. So, I do think we need to move this forward, and tonight, this is just the beginning, kind of at the discussion, but I think really this model you'll see is pretty basic, it's, it's taken from a lot of model ordinances, examples out there. That being said, there's a lot of municipalities and counties that have not adopted any land use regulations yet, but obviously, this is something we need to get done. But I want to say what I think this draft represents is a pretty kind of straight-cut type of ordinance in order to deal with the regulations, but I, but there are some things that I have highlighted, that I think that would really be our talking points tonight, or what we need to decide kind of as a group moving forward. And then, I had invited the land use attorney, she was not able to make it tonight, though, with another municipal meeting, but I don't know if we would get through this tonight, but I do have her tentatively scheduled to be at the July thirty-first site plan subcommittee meeting, should we need to have additional discussion. So, that's kind of an overview of everything, and in terms of kind of jumping into the ordinance, I think the points that we need to really discuss tonight would be first, like on page two, where it talks about district regulations, we need to establish, out of our existing zoning districts, where we would think that these facilities fit, either as a permitted use, permitted by right, or a conditional use. What I've set up just as a draft to get discussion started would be in section two, on page two, that reference to section four hundred thirteen eighty is out of our PD Plan Development Overlay Zoning District, and just for discussion, I would have medical marijuana, I have medical marijuana dispensary facilities as a permitted use in the PD District. And then down below in section three, the reference to four hundred dot thirteen ninety is our Light Industrial Zoning District, and so I have for discussion there, that the other types of facilities, along with dispensaries, but the cultivation, infusion, products manufacturing, and testing facilities would all be permitted in a Light Industrial Zoning District. So, I don't know, Chairman, what, what would you, how would you rather do this? Would you rather kind of stop at those points, or just for me still to, to provide the overview of the whole ordinance?
Yeah, I think it's good, we can, we can stop there. My first thought, one is, my first thought is that we don't need to pass this tonight, and nor do I think we need to have a subcommittee meeting on this alone. I think we can push this out until, given that we approved this other application, we can push this out to August.
Has there any, been any interest, any owners of businesses interested in leasing some, to somebody? Because I don't know, we have one application for a lease in Old North St. Louis, that they're doing it right now, trying to set up leases, because if they get approved, they want to have a lease in place for January one to start operations and that sort of thing, so I don't know if there's any other work that being done or approached the city.
So, there's a lot, there's a lot of interest, and largely, again, it's on dispensaries. Right now, though, it could be, you know, just a simple email, just inquiring about it, some phone calls. I haven't really talked to anyone who specified locations at this point, but I kind of just follow what our land use attorney describes as my talking points, and let them know that we are now in the throes of, of adopting an ordinance, so, but I haven't really looked at any specific locations with any potential applicants.
So, Ms. Kirkemyer, with respect to your first point, why did you, why do we have it at this point, denote it as a permitted use rather than making it a conditional use, which we'd have a little more control over it?
Well, so I think, again, this is just my planning perspective, is that I have less planning concerns to put it as a permitted use, if you already also build in a lot of supplemental regulations to go with it. So, in other words, we've got, you know, another whole page or two that says how these facilities have to look, how they have to be laid out, where they can locate, so to me, in, in essence, we're almost putting those conditions, if you will, on it by our supplemental regulations, and I feel like if they fit the supplemental regulations, then we would be saying that they could be, they would fit into whatever specific location they're looking at.
Understood. My thought is, I, particularly with respect to. My thought is, particularly with respect to the PD District, I would think the dispensary facility would be more appropriate as a conditional use rather than a permitted use. I have less concerns with the industrial permitted uses. What are the commissioners? Do you have any, any further, Ms. Bilderbach?
I, I think that makes sense, because it's a, it would be a permitted use in the Light Industrial District, so as long as it's a permitted use somewhere, I, in the city, I think that's fine.
Further discussion just on that one point, and then we can talk about distance? Okay, Ms. Kirkemeyer?
Okay. So then, following up with that, on page three, we start getting into these supplemental regulations, adding a new section, and under A, those are where distance requirements could be set. And so again, Missouri law allows us to place separation distances between facilities and schools, child daycare centers, churches, and public library, I think, works as well. Public library, it's still here at City Hall, so it, in essence, we have, you know, a lot of kids coming into City Hall into the library. So, that one, I, you know, didn't really put any type of recommendation in at this time. The second one is a distance requirement between facilities, which is 1,500 feet. The third one would be a distance requirement, which again, we can do under Missouri law, is to have a distance requirement from residentially zoned areas. I think the residentially zoned districts should be specified, and those would be our A, B, AR, and MR districts. I know you can have residential in the UD, but I, you know, I think again, we're kind of talking about preservation of single-family areas. And then the last one, what does that say here? Oh, and that's just how the, the distance would be computed. So this map that we put at your seats tonight, we worked with PGAV, we, staff had come up with the existing facilities that we know of, that fit into those public facility categories, and then we had them go ahead and just start placing distance rings around each one of these facilities. So you can kind of tell that the 750 is blocking out quite a bit of area for people to even apply, not that that's good or bad, just pointing it out. By the way, Missouri law allows you to go up to 1,000 square feet, but given since our land area is so small, 1,000 pretty well, you know, wiped out everything. So we started at 750. I asked them also to place the 500 and 300-foot rings. The one thing, though, I'd also like to bring to your attention is this isn't overlaid on a zoning map, and so the other assertion I probably should make right away is, when you look at Manchester Road and think, oh, wow, there's a lot of places along Manchester Road that still would be open to this, I just want to remind you that we've just rezoned that now from Light Industrial and General Commercial to Manchester Corridor Commercial. And I, I don't know how you feel, but I wasn't thinking of making a recommendation to include it in MC District. So, like I said, Manchester Road Corridor looks like there would be a lot of locations, but with, if we did not put it in the MC District, that would not be allowed also. So this is kind of representative then of what those distance separation requirements become when you see it on a map.
It would be interesting, and I think beneficial, to have a zoning overlay map, if we could get that for the August meeting, that'd be appreciated.
Mr. Chairman, I would actually ask, exactly on that is, with these distance requirements, especially at 750, is there any location within the city of Brentwood that would qualify? Because if not, that may be a concern that we aren't.
Right.
We were violating the constitutional amendment.
Yes, that's right.
Well, yeah, and that's all residential, exactly.
I mean, it's residential, it's not shady right now.
Yep.
That's what I was going to say, too.
All right, why don't we, for our next meeting, if we could have a zoning overlay map, because that is a, you know, that would be a liability concern. We'd like to get the zoning attorney's thoughts on that as well.
I mean, there definitely would be, if you went with either 300, 300, there's still quite a bit of areas that would be zone PD along Brentwood Boulevard. The other area of Light Industrial would be along Hanley Road, further down towards the intersection of Manchester, but that would definitely help visualize that.
Were the distances that you do have in Section A, were those recommended by the zoning attorney?
It's, yeah, it's just ones that we considered, and again, more that's customized Brentwood, because again, we're just, we're very small in square miles, so.
Mr. Norberg?
I'm just thinking, should we include the MC District? To me, that would be the one location that really would be attractive to retail look or whatever, and also, UD is not included either?
I, not so far in, in the district regulations, not that it would be allowed.
I don't know why we would not allow UD, and if we're going to allow it in PD, why we wouldn't allow it in UD or the MC as well. I'm just stating, that's my feeling.
Okay. Other questions from commissioners? Yeah, it'll be useful, I think, to have the zoning overlay map.
And the reason why we didn't have it done is, the board just helped us at their last meeting, have PGAV under contract to finally update the zoning map after how many years. So I asked for the buffer map first, but I just today actually got an updated zoning map, so now I think we will be able to do the overlay, so.
Excellent. I note on A, I'm sorry, Section E, there's a reference to Article 2, Section 3, Subsection 13. Is it, do you happen to know what that is?
So that's obviously out of, you know, the Missouri law, and all that was the reference that has established that as much as they could have, the maximum is that dispense, dispense of no more than four ounces of medical marijuana in a 30-day period.
Well, that's got nothing to do with our code.
No, I'm sorry, it does not. That's citing Missouri law.
Okay. I think once we have that zoning overlay map, we can better look at these distances and give it some thought over the next month. Did you want to talk about the license fee as well?
So, yeah, that one I still need to get some clarification on. I know the city, or city land use attorney was kind of looking into that. It doesn't really appear that there are specific amounts that the Missouri law either says this is what you can charge, or you can't charge any more than this. I know they bring in language, it's a little bit more like, again, you can't have a fee that would be, you can't do, I know you can't do like additional taxes or license fee just because it's medical marijuana. I mean, that's clear, that's spelled out. So it looked like, again, from other ordinances we've looked at, that they just established a flat fee. So my question also to our land use attorney, because I think this is important in Brentwood, is that when people, when businesses apply for annual business license, they might fall under different types of businesses, and that's how their business license fee is calculated. So, other people have brought to my attention that some of these products are actually sold now in Walgreens, and, you know, just our general corner pharmacies. Now, those establishments are considered a gross receipts business under the way our code, our Business Chapter Code is written. So I don't know if that would be, it doesn't seem like it would be singling out medical marijuana facilities, if they still were considered a gross receipts business, because that's what our code says, and we have other similar establishments that follow that. But if there, there is for some reason that we can't do that, or it's prohibited by the state act, state law, then obviously, we would just treat it as a flat fee business, which is another category we have. But what that flat fee should be, 150, you know, quite frankly, banks are a flat fee business, but they, they pay a flat fee of $3,000. So I don't know where that 150 kind of fits in, but she's still looking into that for me as well. So that's kind of why that's still highlighted.
That'll be interesting to know. Okay, questions from commissioners before we open it up to the audience? Would anybody like to address the commission on this issue? Mr., please step forward and introduce yourself and your address.
Dan Welsh. I am a lawyer here in St. Louis, Missouri. I don't reside in Brentwood currently, but I used to. I lived in Brentwood for 10 years, enjoyed every minute of it. But in any event, I am here on behalf of a client of mine who has procured site control over one of your pieces of real estate here in Brentwood, and wishes to apply to the state for a license to operate a dispensary in the city of Brentwood. The address and the property owners are also here as well, Phil and Charlene Russo, 8513 Manchester, happens to be within the MC District. And I've got to be honest with you, I've looked at your map, and we looked at other maps that existed, that we created ourselves through brokers and through realtors, and there was a burning desire, quite honestly, to locate a dispensary in the city of Brentwood for a lot of various reasons. And the buffer, as set forth in the Constitution, is quite restrictive, the 1,000-square-foot buffer, if you're looking for a place to locate a dispensary in the city of Brentwood. So you have the ability to take that down if you wanted to. You also have the ability to redefine churches, schools, and daycares, if that's something that is interesting to you. The dispensaries will produce a significant amount of sales tax revenue, and those figures are, I think, readily available through the trade association and through other resources as well. So the, the point that I want to make to you is, if the city of Brentwood's geography is essentially fully consumed by buffers, there will be very few places to locate a medical marijuana dispensary in the city, at which point, the city, I'm not so sure about the liability concerns, I don't think that those exist. To the extent that you have churches and schools and daycares that have a 1,000-square-foot buffer that are tied to them, that's of no fault of the city of Brentwood. But if the city of Brentwood wishes to avail itself to a quality, sophisticated, capitalized, reputable, secure operation, in my opinion, really, the only place to locate it, based upon the existing buffers, is in that MC District. And when we set out to find a good spot within the city of Brentwood, that's where we landed, and 8513 Manchester Road was the best facility for that particular use. So, to the extent that this board and the city of Brentwood could consider opening up the MC District for this particular use, and by the way, I don't disagree that making it a conditional use is not such a bad idea also, that way you can control the use and can control essentially the security components and other factors that you might want to consider. But if the city is, is open to the use and wishes to have quality operators locate within the city, I think the MC District is pretty much what you're going to be, for the most part, limited to. So with that in mind, I'd like for you to consider allowing, whether through permitted use or conditional use, the dispensary operations in your MC District. And keep in mind also, that you do have some churches that exist within that district. You have some entities that are questionable as to whether or not they are in fact churches, because if you look at the amendment, constitutional amendment that the voters passed back in November, there was a definition of church that was utilized, that I don't have in front of me, so I can pull it up if necessary, but if you have an operation that looks like a church but doesn't quite meet with regularity, if you've got an operation that may not be there permanently, if you've got an operation that has a certain number of individuals who may or may not actually be members of the congregation or institution, or whatever you call it, is it a church? That's something that I think is worth considering, and noting that when the city does move to enact an ordinance, it does have the ability to come up with its own definition of what church actually means. And I think that when you look at 8513, this particular location, you'll, you'll see what I'm talking about. So that, that being the case, the only other point that I wanted to bring up was the fact that your buffer requirement, which I understand that will be debated at some point in time, the, the state considered the same issues that you all are debating right now, and the state had no ability to change the fact that there was a 1,000-square-foot buffer as set forth in the constitutional amendment. But what the state did do is, it looked at these cities, municipalities, that were wide open to the use, that wanted the use because they wanted the sales tax revenue, but were up against an unfortunate situation where, because of the sheer number of churches and schools and daycares within their municipalities, there was no good spot to locate a medical marijuana dispensary. So the state left it up to the municipalities to take the buffer down, for one, and two, also helped out municipalities in that position by including a regulation post amendment that defined the methodology for measuring the distance, and that's something that I think that the city of Brentwood should be aware of. And ultimately, what the, the state did through its regulatory process was to define the measurement as, the measurement as the pedestrian walks essentially from legal access point to legal access point. There's some expressed definitions with respect to lot line to entry point, but in any case, that those two points of demarcation are not measured as the crow flies. They are measured as the human being walks through legal access points, which serves to essentially elongate the buffer, which was the intent, as I understand it, for the state to allow cities to have more real estate and geography available to them for the particular use. Last point, I understand that there's a desire here to, to a certain degree, kind of kick the can down the road, or to make sure that we have accurate zoning maps to look at, and the zoning attorney for the city might be available at some point in time. These license applications are due on August 3rd. There's a two-week window to submit them, so August 3rd through August 17th. But there are groups right now that are still looking for their locations, quite honestly, and they can go anywhere they want. There's plenty of real estate that's available in other municipalities in the St. Louis metropolitan area and throughout the state. It's, it's getting a little late to find something at this point in time, but it is still an option. There are municipalities that have gotten in front of this to a certain degree earlier than others, and there are municipalities that haven't even touched it. If there's a regulatory framework within a municipality that, that creates uncertainty in the eyes of the applicants, and uncertainty in the eyes of everyone, for that matter, if there is no zoning ordinance that has been enacted, then that uncertainty causes the potential for disruption, which makes the desire to locate in a particular municipality a little bit less desirable. So certainly, to the extent that you all are going to operate under the timing and based upon the information that you want to have at your disposal, I certainly understand that, but I just wanted you all to know that, to the extent that there could be a process expedited to the point where there is an ordinance enacted, that would result in the certainty that applicants would be hoping for when deciding where to spend their resources and where to locate their facilities.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Welsh. Well said. I think it will be useful to have our zoning attorney at the next meeting to talk to her about a few points that he raised about the MC District, about the way in which the measurements are calculated, her thoughts on the distances, all of those things would be, the cost of the license, all those things would be, things I'd like to talk to her about. Ms. Bilderbach?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to go ahead and put out there that I'm not comfortable with the idea of trying to determine, or try to change rather what is a church or what isn't a church. I actually have my own church that I created, and we have formal congregational services eight times a year, when we can afford to have a venue that we rent. And I don't think it's up to us to regulate how often a church decides to meet in order for it to be called a church, or what format its members, membership does. Like, we don't have ties, we don't have dues for our church members. We actually have members paid to attend, to help us pay for the, the actual venue. So I'm really uncomfortable with that, as a matter of course. That said, I, I'm not opposed to the idea of considering this in the MC District, but I would also point out that there's residential areas that really butt up against that, and so that's another issue where the zoning maps become critically important. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The church definition would be another issue. We'd like to talk to the zoning attorney, taking into account Ms. Bilderbach's concerns. Any further discussion at this preliminary stage? Anyone else in the audience like to address the commission on this? Okay, then we'll, can you see if she'll be available at our, at the August meeting, Ms. Kirkemeyer? August 6, 7?
Second Wednesday?
14th. Acceptable to the commission? Okay, very good. Okay, thank you, Mr. Welsh. Okay, Aldermanic report, I see Mayor Demmett in the audience. Any reports, sir? City Planners report, Ms. Kirkemeyer? City planners report, Ms. Kirkemeyer?
None.
No need for a subcommittee rationale. Ms. Kirkemeyer, any other business this evening? Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, stand adjourned. So where does your church meet?